Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Madam Chair. How are you today?
I am doing well, thank you. Anybody else that we need to wait for? Before we start the meeting today, I will be chairing the meeting. Our Chair Supervisor Matt Ryan is not today.
Morning.
Are we ready to go? Good morning.
We're ready to go, Lena.
Right. So we have Supervisor Ryan, our Board Chair, will not be with us today. So I'm going to be chairing the meeting today, and I understand Supervisor Gay is not able to connect because of just the internet and phone issues. So with that, we will start the meeting, and I just want to welcome everyone to joining us on today on November. What's today?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth. It's on the Tuesday, and this is our regular board meeting, and I'm going to recognize the board members that are here to just have them say welcome. Okay Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, good morning, everybody, and good to be with you all today. It's I know it's getting busy because the holidays are coming up, and it's wonderful to be here with you for the board meeting this morning. So thank you, Madam Vice Chair, who's now Madam Chair today. Appreciate you taking over for Matt.
And Supervisor Vespas?
Good morning, everyone. Just happy to be here. A lot of good things have been happening, and so I'm really excited to be able to share that with everyone and be here with folks. And so, thank you Chair Fowler, and look forward to a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Today should be a short meeting, but I want to just double check to see Supervisor Gay is online. Has called in Lindsey. Do you see her?
Chair Fowler, currently she is not online. I'm watching for her phone number. In case she joins, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we are going to call this meeting to order today. The is November sixteenth. It's on a Tuesday, and this is our regular board meeting. We are going to start with a pledge of allegiance, and as Supervisor Chair Ryan always says, if you don't have a flag, stand to the east. So join me in this pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the state. One nation, under God, under God, this bold liberty, justice. Okay, now that we have done that, thank you. We are now going to call to the public. When we call to the public, it's for items that are not on the agenda. You may address the board, and we will not be able to take action on your comments and bring on items that you bring to the board. However, we can ask you questions, but by open meeting laws, we will not be able to have a conversation among each other or take action. So is there anyone that would like to address the board on items that are not on the agenda? And I see Lindsey, and she is trying to see if anyone has their hands raised. And Lindsey, if you would explain how someone joins the panel in bringing up their concern or their statement.
Thank you, Chair Fowler. If you would like to provide a comment during this public comment session, you'll just click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand, and that will notify us. And so then we will call on you. And at this time, I don't show anyone is present over the phone. So again, if you just hit the raise hand icon, I can go ahead and allow you to speak. And also Chair Fowler, at this time, we do not have any emails to our board comments email box.
Okay. We will wait a moment. Sometimes it takes a while to find that click that you need to do. And if somebody is on the phone, there was someone wanting to be on the phone.
Yeah, they would hit star nine, and then that will allow them to talk as well. This time I don't see any hands raised in the attendees.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you, Lindsey. With that, we're going to move on to our next item. The Board of Supervisors, every meeting has a consent agenda, and so that the consent agendas are items that we have reviewed before, and they're pretty much routine items that come to the board. And with that, we usually take just one vote to vote to approve those items. Today, we have one to eight. And we do need to remove number four Supervisor Horstman will need to remove herself from that item. And outside of that, we'll be able to approve the items with one motion. However, I'm going to turn to the board to see if there's any items that need to be removed here and to be considered separately by the board.
Madam Chair, other than four, where I will need to recuse myself, I have no other items from the consent agenda to be removed.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
A motion to accept the consent agenda?
I second that motion.
Great. And with that, and all those approved, please say aye.
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 And it's a unanimous vote. And back to number four, and we only have two board members, and I'm going to turn to Steve and probably Rose and how we want to address this because of what two board members were not accorded.
Madam Chair, if I may first, if I can officially for the record, state on the record that I do need to recuse myself, and I don't for because of my relationship with the Museum of Northern Arizona. So with that, I am removing myself, and I will not take part in the discussion or vote. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. I overstepped that one. Thank you. And back go back to number four.
Chair Fowler, Supervisor Gay has joined, and she is here.
Oh, one. Okay, just some time. Supervisor Gay, we are on number four, item four. We have approved items from one, two, through eight. And with the exception of number four Supervisor Horstman has removed herself because Sheriff her firm has represented the Museum of Northern Arizona. So at this time, I wonder if if you, you or if the supervisors want to separate this as a separate item so that we can have a discussion. If not, I will entertain a motion.
A motion.
Thank you.
Move forward. This is for number four. Is this, are we redoing the consent agenda?
Number four.
Number four.
Only four.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair Fowler, real quick. This is Rose.
Rose.
I just want to clarify that the motion is to approve item number four. That wasn't explicit when the motion was stated.
Sorry. Okay, so can I make a motion to accept number four or approve of number four, please? Which is the consideration of possible action to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-seven approving a deed of open spacing conservation easement agreement between the Museum of Northern Arizona as get grantor in Coconino County as grantee.
Thank you. And Supervisor Gay, do you second that?
I guess I'll second that.
Okay, and this item, we've been, it's been moving through the board for or in process for some time, so we're all familiar with it. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. At that, we have taken care of our consent item. Okay, we now move on to our next agenda item, and the board will need to resolve as the Board of Equalization.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are now sitting as the Board of Equalization. We have three items, number nine, ten, and eleven, and we can vote to approve with a single vote. And are there, is that, do you, would you like to remove an item or for discussion Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If you're indicating that we in fact can decide these in one vote, at this time, I would in fact make a motion to accept the hearing officer's decision with regards to item nine, ten, and eleven as set forth and with the description as set forth in the agenda and in the resolutions attached to our packets.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve number nine, ten, eleven of the Board of Equalization, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we have approved the Board of Equalization. Now we need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors.
So move.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Horstman and second Supervisor Gay, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we sit as the Board of Supervisors, and we've been move on to our next item, which is discussion and possible action items. And we have our Public Affairs Director, who will be providing us an update. And so let's see, is Trey on?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we're transporting him over.
Welcome, Jay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisors, I just wanted to provide, as I do every week, a brief legislative update for you all this morning. Will be pretty short today relative to our meeting. First, President Biden signed the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act into law yesterday at the White House. He also took actions over the weekend and appointed what is known as an infrastructure coordinator. The infrastructure coordinator for the White House will oversee the implementation of the law by federal agencies. Just to, as a reminder, the bill includes almost a trillion dollars in funding for the next essentially five fiscal years, and that funding will be implemented by the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Department of Commerce, the Department of Labor, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Energy, and other federal agencies. And so this infrastructure coordinator, who will be Mitch Landrieu, he's the former mayor of New Orleans. He will oversee that on behalf of the White House. And just as we're learning more about how federal agencies will implement the law, essentially what happened is, is as I explained last week, the jobs included some provisions of law from other bills that were circulating through the Senate. So that would be the Drinking Water Act, the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act. And the funding within those acts is sometimes formula based. So what we expect is, is that the formula based funding will reach vocalities before the competitive based funding. So there are a number of provisions that I presented on last week that are new. For instance, the broadband, the some of the transportation and infrastructure funding, some of the energy and water infrastructure funding. Some of that will be competitive based off of how the fund, how the agencies promulgate their rules. And that infrastructure coordinator will be an important way of organizing all of that, so we understand the process for each agency as well as those priorities and values that I shared with you last week. That is what that infrastructure coordinator is going to be guiding for as the federal agencies implement that. And then we are also underway within the county planning for which departments are interested in which buckets of funding. So that process is ongoing. Any questions on that before I move on to a state update?
So Trey, are there any questions from the board supervisors? No. Trey, I do have a question. This infrastructure bill is not for shovel ready to be spent right now. What's the timeline on it?
It's really going to depend. It's a huge bill, and so it will depend on which particular provisions you're interested in, and then the agency. So for instance, like Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act, some of the RACE grants that are associated with that, which is, you know, discretionary transportation infrastructure funding, the timeline is just going to vary. Something that's more formula based, we could see in the next six months. Something that's more competitive based will take longer as the agencies promulgate their rules and their processes for how jurisdictions apply, what the rules are for applying, how they're evaluating applications. So I unfortunately don't have a general answer for you, Madam Chair, just because it's really going to depend upon which funding you're interested in. And I can certainly run any of that to ground if you have specific questions on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, in same, in the same vein of funding, Governor Ducey announced yesterday the Arizona Broadband Development Grant Program. And he explained that this, so these funds come from American Rescue Plan dollars that the governor has allocated. It's a hundred million dollars in funding. And it will enable local communities to construct or improve broadband infrastructure, something I know you're very interested in, Madam Chair. And essentially what they're looking to do is they want this program to bridge the digital divide and then enhance connectivity. So the grants will serve both rural and urban areas, and then they will reimburse according to the Governor's Office and the Commerce Authority. They will reimburse costs associated with activities directly related to the construction, installation, or improvement of broadband infrastructure. So this doesn't necessarily mean a partnership to build new infrastructure. It could be improvement of existing broadband infrastructure. Coconino County is eligible under the rural grant. They've divided it between rural grants and urban grants, and the award is capped at ten million dollars. The deadline for applying for the grant program is December tenth, and we are working on application details for the county to apply to the grant. And it was just announced yesterday.
That is the best news. That's wonderful. That is one of our, the board's priority is getting broadband to our, out into our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to note that this is separate from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funding as well. So just to keep that in mind. That concludes my update, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Our next on our agenda, we have our discussion with the county manager. Here's our update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lindsey, can you put the planning calendar up, please? Just want to go through that very quickly with the few meetings we have left in this year. While Lindsey's doing that, thanks to the board for last week's discussion on ARPA. So let's go quickly to the calendar. Of course, we're doing the sixteenth, the business of the sixteenth today. On the seventh, we are going to make a couple of changes, and these will be formalized tomorrow to agenda review. So the discussion on ARPA that you see at one fifteen, we're going to be extending that time because as you'll recall from last week's discussion with the board, we have follow up items and follow up categories to discuss with the board, one of them being mental and behavioral health. And so we're looking at scheduling that for the afternoon of the seventh, beginning at one o'clock, and we're trying to get more than an hour, so probably one, probably two to three hours to cover that particular category. And then it's not, we just put it on right now. We're also proposing Wednesday, December eighth, one o'clock, another special meeting to cover the other category. So the other category from the ARPA discussions actually included the grant process for outside agencies. And so we're proposing that, and we just, we'll poll the board based with your district directors to check your availability for the afternoon of December eighth in order to have the follow up discussion on the grants outside agencies, and also I want to have another, also an additional discussion on the supports to businesses through, through, through ARPA. And so those are the two categories that we wanted to bring. Whether we do it on the seventh or the eighth, we can interchange. But again, we wanted to steer away from another six hour, seven hour meeting where we really present a lot of information. And we're going to break it up into the two afternoons, and then since we do have the fourteenth on the screen, look at having the fourteenth in order to bring those decisions back to the board. So presentation and information on the seventh and eighth, and then board action on the fourteenth related to those categories remaining in the ARPA. So I want to stop and see if there's any comments or questions on that, on that idea from board members.
Any questions on the proposed changes in our calendar?
Madam Chair, just a comment if I may. Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. And County Manager, and I like the proposal of breaking it up over the two days. The marathon sessions sometimes just get everybody a little blurry eyed. And, and then I'm very, I'm very glad to see that we've got a date for action because I think it is time that after full discussion that we do take some action on this. So thank you, County. The County Manager, I really appreciate it.
Supervisor Vespas?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, County Manager, and your team for making the adjustments in the planning and providing the ARPA information in more digestible chunks. And so I look forward to those conversations, and then I also appreciate that we now have a date to look for for some action. So it's good, 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 good plan presented, and so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gay.
Let's see, I think.
Supervisor Gay.
I can follow up with her and give feedback.
Right, she, you can follow up on her. Okay, great. Thank you.
So again, I want to go back to the planning calendar. I just wanted to show a couple of other items if I could, Lindsey. So on the sorry, that's my phone. On the fourteenth, we have the Auditor General is going to be returning. We had originally scheduled the Auditor General for November, but due to a scheduling conflict on there, and we had to reschedule that to December fourteenth. So that'll be happening. We'll do a COVID update. The, we have a discussion presentation on road district policies, and that's scheduled for the fourteenth. And then, and then as I indicated, we'll be changing or looking at the time for the ARPA follow up. Beyond that, we have a planning and zoning case the evening of the fourteenth. You can see here Briar Patch for Shadow Mountain Wells, and that's occurring that evening. Quick note up on redistricting. So county redistricting, the, going back to the independent redistricting stating congressional redistricting, that is going to be scheduled to take place the week of the fourteenth, the action by this, by the commission. We are going to be holding off on our county redistricting until we have those lines because when we lay those lines down on county precincts, that automatically creates precinct splits. And so the redistricting team is proposing, and we did discuss it at last, the last board meeting, waiting, letting the IRC do their work of congressional legislative redistricting, and then restarting the recount, the county redistricting effort, including the public engagement process. And so looking at at the holding until we see what the IRC does, they're scheduled, as I said, they're scheduled to take action the week of the fourteenth. But again, for practical purposes, we're going to hold and let them do their work, and then we'll restart the county redistricting. With that, be looking at having a pretty in-depth public participation process partially in December, but holidays, competing with holidays is difficult, but hitting it in earnest during the month of January, and then looking for board adoption, the first meeting in February for county districts. So again, that's the process there. And you'll see other items on the agenda for the, for the, for the, for the new year. We are going to maintain the schedule that we've done in twenty twenty-one of meetings, the first and the first, second, and the fourth meeting, week of the, of the month, and keeping that third week open. But that's kind of the schedule we had in twenty-one. And so without objection, we'll, we'll be, Lindsey did send out the, the list of meeting dates for this year with that schedule in mind. One other item of note, and it's of course, you may have already heard, based on changes from federal agencies, OSHA, the vaccine mandates for employers, including public sector employers, for employers with with a hundred or more employees, that was announced last week. That would then it was promptly held in federal court out of Louisiana, I believe. And so what that would basically do is mandate that the county as an employer of more than one hundred employees, we would have to implement a vaccine mandate program policy that would include either mandated vaccine or testing option for individuals to, to, to want to choose to do, to be tested on a weekly basis. Also included in that was a leave policy, and we'd already done the leave policy adoption, which is for, this board already took action on. And then also the requirement for masking by employees that are not vaccinated. And we currently have a masking or a policy in place here at the county and within the workplace. So several of those items have been addressed through proactive policymaking by the board supervisors, but we are going to be, of course, holding until we have legal direction on the other parts of, of the, of the policy change from OSHA. Our cognizant agency at the state level is the Industrial Commission, and so they are, of course, involved in interpretation of the policy and the implementation if it comes to that stage. Again, we're on hold until we have legal some, some changes or some movement at the legal front with regard to that policy action. So, Madam Chair, those were the relevant topics from each of today.
Are there any questions regarding the calendar that we just covered? And December fourteenth is the Arizona IRC. In the meantime, we will continue to host meetings and have meetings regarding our map with our communities. So I urge all of you to do that. We have a couple of them scheduled, and then the OSHA policy for a hundred, over a hundred employees. Are there any questions regarding this? Comments?
No, Madam Chair. Thanks for the update. And yes, it's great to get our calendar together between now and, and the Christmas season. So I appreciate that.
We're moving into our calendar. So yes, Supervisor Gay.
I can hear you guys. I ain't going to fiddle, fiddling around with my phone. You guys couldn't hear me, but I'm back on. I had to touch all sorts of buttons. But it's real cloudy out here. I think that's the reason why. But anyway, I'm glad that the calendar is out, and it's good always, you know, to know what, what's in the, ahead of us, and that, you know, those are days that we need to put aside. And I want to thank Trey for giving us an update on the legislative state and the federal level. And it's good to be updated, you know, as soon as, as possible, and that those that come by, you know, not too long ago. So and thank you very much, you know, for, I might be dropping here and here and there, but you know, I'm still in the meeting. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you Supervisor Vespas. You're muted.
I'm muted. I apologize for that. Um, I just actually, my, my question was answered. So I, I just want to say thank you for, for the timeline and, and looking forward to those the, the time when we get public feedback from our county maps. I know that's something that's a concern for some of our citizens, and I would like to see us have a plan for dates when we can host those for our community. So I'm looking forward to having those conversations.
Yes, it's good to have our calendar ready when our families want to know what our schedule is. So that's really good. And our, all of our employees as well. With that, I would suggest the Public Works Roads policy that maybe they can pair us up and go over it with us before it is presented to the board. So we can really think about what is going to be presented to us. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thank you, Chair. I meant to bring something up only because I'm not sure where it is. There is a put that, wrote that down. I would love to get that information as, as expressed by the Chair, and I know we have a planning and zoning or, or coming up review, and I just wanted to know where Briar Patch Shadow Mountain Wells is.
Yeah, that was the other question. Yeah.
I've never heard of it.
I don't see Jay on the, on the list today. I don't see Jay on the, on the list today.
Now I'm going to be embarrassed if you tell me District One, but I have never heard of it before.
Yeah, and I can't, I don't know the answer to the question, Madam Chair Supervisor Horstman.
Supervisor Horstman, this is Lindsay. Briar Patch is the, in Oak Creek Canyon. Yeah, and then Shadow Mountain Wells, I don't think is going to happen according to Jay at the last review. And I believe that one, those, so they're both in District Three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bagay?
I have a question. Lena, you had mentioned that, um, maybe sharing or continuing to share maps with our constituents. Um, I'm kind of thinking, um, the last meeting that we had, I was wondering, I wonder if we had mentioned something about waiting for the maps coming out from the IRC? And we can go with that? Or are we going to go with what, um, um, the different scenarios that we had? And share it with our, with our constituents out here? That's a question I have.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Steve, you want to answer?
Yeah, uh, with scenarios that are being developed by the staff, we're going to hold on presenting those to, in, in a, in, in the board meeting until we get the IRC state and congressional mapping done. So that we can see where those precinct splits are going to occur. And then from there, we will then begin the public outreach process. So it will be probably the last part, more than likely the month of January, and then bring adoption of districts to the board, the first meeting in February. Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And, and the one I was talking about was the Arizona IRC map that is, um, that is available right now. Maybe what we can do, uh, Steve, is if you could email it to all the board supervisors and compare that with the one that we submitted, the, the Coconino County map.
Oh, excuse me, I'll wait.
So there's, there's the state legislature. Um, and then there's the congressional, that's the state. And then the, the district, um, is the county. And those are, have not been shown anywhere. Those are still internal.
We're still working on those.
Okay, so, so it's best to kind of wait and see, um, um, on those then.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know. Bye.
Thank you. Um, any other questions from board members? Comments? Okay, well, thank you Steve. And now that we know where the well is. That's really good. Okay, um, we now are going to enter roundtable. And, um, this, we just, each of the board members will provide us a short update as to some of the activities they're working on. And maybe some heads up that other board members need to know. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. And boy, this is the shortest meeting I've ever remembered. I think we need you to chair all of the meetings, and I'm going to tell Matt that, so. Uh, the, um, first of all, I would like to, uh, basically, uh, thank our community. Huronimo and myself, uh, were at the Safeway store, uh, for the annual Stuff the Bus, uh, at the Safeways, the three Safeway stores. And, uh, we're encouraging folks, uh, to either make contributions or to bring out turkeys and, and holiday meal preparations for, uh, Flagstaff Family Food Center. And it was a wonderful time. Uh, lots of members of our community came out to both help as also, uh, to contribute. We stuffed the bus, uh, of four tons of food, which is just absolutely fabulous. They received contributions of over $76,000, uh, of which there was a matching that helped us reach that amount from a Desert Financial Credit Union. And thanks, a big shout out to Desert Financial Credit Union. Last year and was of course COVID, but the prior years, the Stuff the Bus was a competition between the city and the county. And both Huronimo and I have, have, have thrown down the gauntlet for the city and said, next year it's going to be a competition again, right Huronimo? And, uh, we know that the county will be able to stuff the bus uh, with a lot more turkeys than those, those turkeys I was going to say, but I won't. But those people at the city of Flagstaff. So, um, uh, but it was a wonderful day. And it was great to be with Supervisor Vasquez and to be with members of our community. Second is of course, near and dear to our hearts right now is redistricting. I got a call at six fifteen this morning from Supervisor Ryan just to make sure that we weren't resting on our laurels with regards to the IRC and redistricting. And just want to announce that, um, there will be a hearing, redistricting, front of the IRC tonight, uh, Tuesday, November sixteenth at six PM in Cottonwood at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. Uh, for more information, you can go on the IRC website, uh, for more information on this. Uh, we are still very much in the process. We still very much need to be heard. Coconino County, as the Chair has indicated, has presented our map, uh, which we believe is, uh, the appropriate map for the IRC to adopt for legislative District Six and Seven, uh, as we believe it's the most competitive map. It retains the voice of Northern Arizona and of course, keeps both Greater Flagstaff Hall and the City of Sedona Hall. Uh, for those that cannot appear in person, and there will be more meetings coming up. And again, you can check the IRC dot AZ dot gov website for that. You can also make comments, written comments. And I would highly recommend that you do make written comments. Uh, again IRC dot AZ dot gov website for your written comments. And then, um, I was able to, uh, moving forward, I was able to also meet with District One representatives on the Parks and Rec Commission. Try to do that on a regular basis, both Howard Brown and Daniel Heil represent District One in the Commission. And just to get their update on what's going on, on, uh, for Parks and Rec. And just to discuss, uh, the future of Parks and Rec. And again, I just want to, uh, extend a hearty thank you to Howard Brown and Daniel Heil and all of those who serve our county in these boards and commissions. So important, you're our eyes and ears, uh, and really our input from the community. So thank, I want to thank them for their, uh, and extend my thanks for their participation. And then last, we'll make it short and sweet, since the, the Chair has done a good job at this meeting. Uh, I want to also give a shout out to Supervisor Judy Bagay, who was honored this week by Arizona List as part of the, uh, Native American Heritage, um, Month in Celebration. Uh, they did a very nice bio and a very, uh, a nice, um, update on Supervisor Bagay. So Supervisor Bagay, congratulations on that. So Madam Chair, that's my roundup for this week.
Great, thank you. Congratulations Supervisor Bagay, I saw that. Huronimo? If you could provide your update.
Yes, thank you. I'll start off by also congratulating Supervisor Bagay. It was very nice little, little post that they put there with the information about her, and that was really cool to see. So, uh, congratulations. Uh, it's been a, a pretty busy week. Last week was, uh, was pretty heavy. It was three days, but really intense. And, uh, between the Forest Service visits and then our, our evening meeting and then, uh, Wednesday with all the ARPA stuff. And then in the evening, uh, Supervisor Fowler and, uh, and Chair Ryan and I did comments at the IRC, uh, public hearing. And, uh, and then later on Thursday, uh, had the opportunity to, to join, uh, uh, I guess Chair Fowler, uh, to, to Windarock for, for an event and, and, uh, give thanks to Senator Kelly and, and for, for his support in helping, uh, develop and get that cultivate the meeting that, that resulted in the, the funding for, for the, the museum flood, uh, area. So that was, that was exciting and, and a lot of fun, long day. And then, uh, and then I also participated with Supervisor Horstman on the Stuff the Bus. And that was a lot of fun and being out there and talking to our community and really advocating for the, the most vulnerable in our community, especially during the holidays. And, uh, one thing I did want to mention, uh, was the, um, last week, the Murdoch Center hosted a video called A Reckoning in Boston. And it was, uh, it was basically a documentary that looks at, at contemporary issues uh, around racism, housing insecurity, food and land sovereignty, access to education, policing and more. And, and it was, uh, it was really, uh, really an interesting. I ha, I still haven't seen the video. I've only seen little clips of it. But I had the opportunity of meeting with the filmmakers and having a discussion with them about, about how this was relevant, uh, in, in, across the country. And so, so I just wanted to, to put a shout out there for, for the work that the Murdoch Center and the Southside Community Association has been doing with, with some of their partnerships, uh, with NAU. And then I had the opportunity of, uh, yesterday of meeting with Cheyenne Grabick from the Coconino Community College. He's their, uh, Community Outreach Coordinator. And we were just talking about potential ways that, that, uh, the, the community college could provide, uh, certificates and, and different programs that could be of support, not just for our community, but also for, for county staff, like things that we could collaborate on. And so that was an interesting first meeting and look forward to seeing how we can, we can further the conversation. Um, and then I just wanted to mention a couple, uh, events coming up, uh, this Friday, November nineteenth from four to eight. Is the third Friday at the Market of Dreams. There'll be local artisans and entrepreneurs. Uh, and then Monday, uh, November twenty-second, there'll be the Sunnyside Stone Soup Community Dinner at the Market of Dreams, uh, from five to eight. And the Market of Dreams is on the corner of Fourth Street and Seventh Avenue in that little building, kind of where, uh, Tres Amigos Food Truck is right now. Although they might be moving from what it hears, or seems like. And then, let's see. And so, yeah, so there's for the Stone Soup Community Dinner, please come join us. We have 20 different types of soup to enjoy. There'll be music and, uh, the only, the only ask is that you please bring your own bowl. So there's just an effort to create community. Everybody's invited. And so, um, so yeah, so, so really just trying to, uh, to, to work with the community, you know, been recording a couple of thank you videos and, and trying to put some videos out there for information. You know, uh, Supervisor Horstman mentioned earlier, the IRC, uh, can't, can't stress how important it is for the feedback right now. Because we really only have two weeks left before they make their final decision. And so it has to be an all-out push. Please advocate, please send a letter or an email, some written comment. Because this is our last opportunity to, uh, to make some change on these districts. That'll last for 10 years. So it's really important. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. If you can e, email us those, um, events that are coming up, that would be great. Now it's part of our calendar.
Will do.
Supervisor Bagay? Supervisor Bagay, you can provide your update now?
No, I don't see her on the screen at this point.
Hmm, okay, well maybe.
One second, I'm promoting her. She got bumped out, but she's coming back on.
She's being bounced around Supervisor Bagay? If you can provide your update, your district update?
Here we go. Oh my gosh, this is so crazy. Awful. Um, I've been pounding on my phone here. Basically, um, just a meeting with the chapters and, um, doing, um, again, you know, getting on their, um, um, planning meetings and chapter meetings that are scheduled for this month. And we, uh, Mormon Lake, Cheryl had an opportunity to go down there and meet with the Mormon Lake, um, bar district. And we also had the, um, Veterans Symposium on Thursday, Friday last week, which was a big, um, success. The county, uh, was, um, was, um, thanked for the little tokens that we gave them. And, um, it was a, I had a chance to, um, see a gore dance. I've never seen a gore dance. So it was, it was really nice because we said, we stayed there for almost two whole days there. So I just want to say, I said something that I, I felt that, you know, I needed it. And a lot of healing, a lot of veterans were there, a lot of their family members were there. And it was just something to see. And I was, I was glad to, you know, be a part of it. And so, um, and then also there's, um, um, a group from, um, Tubercity Chap, not Tubercity Chapter, um, uh, what is it called? I can't remember the name of it. But anyway, they're going around and they're talking about the sewer ponds, um, down there at Curly Valley. And I've been involved with them as far as meeting for the coal mine chapters. And then I did have an opportunity to, um, meet with the chapter president, as far as, you know, some issues that are arising in that area. And, um, also spoke to, uh, Tom Hollerin regarding our roads and, um, issues that we had that, you know, we, we kind of wanted some, um, input from him. So been busy, you know, just, um, um, doing, um, this and that, you know, in various aspects of the, um, of, um, intervention or, you know, trying to help in certain ways. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks for, um, attending the, the Western Navajo, um, event, uh, Veterans Conference. At, well, actually it was a Veterans Conference that took place at Twin Arrows. So that's really great. From District Five, as of course, our Board Chair, Supervisor Ryan is not with us today. From District Five, we were, we, and I want to acknowledge Huronimo and Trey and, uh, and, uh, Arena for joining, uh, me to the, um, meeting with the US Senator, um, Mark Kelly, uh, in Windarock and attend the Navajo Nation Veterans Event there. And, and meeting with the, um, county supervisors from Arizona. So that was a really wonderful event. And of course, we had, we brought up our, the issues that, that confront our county with the Senator. And I was a bit surprised the amount of time we spent with him. It was quite a, um, quite a long time. Of course, his staff and everyone was so, so amazingly, um, just, it was well organized. And it was really a good event there. So I want to give time to Huronimo and Trey, see if they have anything to add.
Sure, I'd just like to say thank you for the experience and, and for being the tour guide out there. And, and, uh, it was definitely great to sit down and, and get to listen to other officials from Navajo and Apache County talk about their issues to the Senator and, and have that opportunity to, to just understand better how, uh, how we have some mutual interests and how, uh, rural Northern Arizona has some, some serious needs that aren't always addressed when, when the urban parts of the state are making decisions. And so it was good to, to listen to that and hear that advocacy and have the opportunity to be, be out on the land and whatnot. It was, it was really nice. I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Trey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to you and to Supervisor Vasquez for a great day and a great event. It was wonderful being on the Navajo Nation for Veterans Day to be able to celebrate and honor veterans there as well as to participate in the great conversation that we had with Senator Kelly and his staff. I, for the rest of the board's edification, I think we, we were able to speak to him about, um, a variety of our federal priorities that this board has previously identified, related to abandoned buildings, related to, um, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And then also thank him and his staff's work on the museum flood area funding, um, which they were very appreciative of. And so I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to go there and to be on the Navajo Nation and to hear from your colleagues, um, in Apache and Navajo Counties, as well as from Navajo Nation officials on the overarching and shared issues that we have, uh, before the federal government. So it was a wonderful day, and I thank you for the opportunity to both you and Supervisor Vasquez, as well as Arena.
Yeah, thank you. And a lot of discussion was also around the partnership that we all have and, and could have. So it was a real, it was very, very good day for us. And, um, I want to just mention that the North Rim is open. It, it is open from dusk to dawn. It's a day use, you know, we've been working to have the North Rim be open year round. This is part of that program. And the, there are, you can go there and there, this general store has limited groceries that. And the, there are, you can go there and the, the general store has limited groceries that are open. There is no lodging, but in the main building, the water is on. So North Rim is open. The highway into the North Rim is a dot road and that is open. So I just want to announce that. And since that's been part of our federal agenda for some time as well. We, we continue to, I continue to co-chair the county and Navajo Nation meetings about broadband. And that's going to be taking place again on November twenty-ninth. So that is going to be continuing and discussions will continue with the broadband and with the Navajo Nation. This Friday, I am participating on NACO is, NACO is having a Native American Heritage Month Luncheon and, or just a session during lunch, I guess. And George Real Bird III and I from, well, he's from Big Horn County, Montana. Him and I will be, will be doing a presentation during that time. So he can all join us. That'd be really great. We continue to meet with the communities regarding the IRC map as well as the county map, encouraging our residents to write letters, to make comments. There are upcoming meetings and I was wondering, in our region, I was wondering if maybe Trey or, or Steve could go over the, the dates in our region where people can actually go and make those comments. We also encourage letters to be submitted so that we can make sure that our region is heard.
Madam Chair, I can just quickly cover this evening, the IRC is going to be in Cottonwood for a hearing that starts at six PM. And you went over the, the specifics on that. From there, the, the meetings are going to be going back and forth between the valley and up here. The next hearing though, that when we had, there was a virtual town hall that we had a few weeks ago. There's another virtual town hall scheduled that's focused in on Northern and Central Arizona. Let me just get to that real quick if I could.
It was the one that Hopi also.
Yeah, so on December first, there's going to be a hearing in Windarock. That's a December first at, at six PM. Also Payson is going to be sharing that, that broadcast site as well. Pine Top is November thirtieth. And then from there, it's going to be broadcast on the thirtieth out of Avondale. All of these are, are being shared publicly through, through, through WebEx. And so individuals are able to, to listen in. Hopi is going to be, actually November twentieth is going to be Hopi. And that's going to be at the Hopi Veterans Memorial Center. That's on November twentieth at ten AM. So again, if, if individuals can go to the IRC website under public meetings, they have a list of all of the sessions as well as the, the WebEx links to, to listen in on.
So we are continuing to encourage our communities to either appear at these sites or else to make virtual login and make comments or write letters. So we're going to continue to host those meetings and have those meetings. So thank you so much. And if you have anything else with that, Steve, let me check with you.
We're done on our end.
Hey, and Board, the Board of Supervisors, any more comments? Anything else?
Nope.
Wow, we are actually going to be done early. All right.
I'm just shocked that we're done so fast.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think the Chair Ryan is going to hear the last of that though.
He would have extended it another hour. Okay, well, thank you. Judy, you have anything else?
No, just basically, thank you for all your hard work and continue. And we have a lot ahead of us and it's almost a year that we've been in this capacity. And I still wish the office was open and that we would actually see people come into our office and working with us. But thank you very much, my colleagues and people that are on the, on the call Zoom and also the staff and people from the outside. Thank you.
All right, with that, I adjourned the meeting. Thank you so much for joining us today. Have a safe rest of the week and we'll see you next week. Thank you.
Take care.